I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to call the order or village board meeting, regular village board meeting for September 28th, or please call the roll?
Moretka, here. Jones?
Here.
Sluse?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Ham?
Here.
Howie?
Here.
All right, in your packets were the minutes from our regular village board meeting, September 14th, 2020. You've had time to look those over, are there any additions or corrections to those? If not, entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion.
For a second?
Second.
Then moved by trustee Moretka, second by trustee Ham.
Moretka?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Here.
Parker?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Jones?
Yes.
And Sluse?
Yes.
All right, also in your packets were the payroll for the pay period ending 9/19/20 of $47,851.08, an account's payable for the general fund, $44,864.22, motor fuel tax fund, $6,750, for a total of $51,614.22. Are there any questions on any of the bills or payroll? So Chief, uh, the question came up about, um, we use drowley to fix the squad car. Are we still, do we still rotate between the dealers for that type of thing, or it depends what model, what brand we're having, or how does that work?
Yes, and usually we also maintain how long they're gonna, dealers will have their cars down. We get the next service at one of the dealers is better than another, and we've talked to them about that, but we can never get them to put us in the front of the line.
Got it. Okay, makes sense. Any other questions about the bills? All right, entertain a motion to pay the bills.
Motion.
For a second?
Second.
Moved by trustee Parker, second by trustee Moretka.
Parker?
Yes.
Moretka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
All right, uh, public comment. Uh, why don't we go to, uh, we've got Tracy and Angie on the phone from Aqua. You guys wanna give us an update, what's going on? Can you hear me, Tracy?
Sure, Tracy, do you wanna go ahead and speak in? Yeah, hi, everyone.
Hello.
This is Tracy. Um, update on the Corning project, uh, we have received comments back from the railroad. Uh, Robinson quickly addressed those comments and turned that right back around to them. It is back in their hands, so we're still waiting on that section at the railroad crossing to be permitted. Um, the section between Third and First, which includes the railroad crossing, the pavement there will be a part of our contract, so that, that will not interfere with your IDOT project for the crossing if that doesn't come in sooner than later. Um, west of the railroad track, we are finishing up a cut and cap. I expect that to be done tomorrow. East of the railroad track, uh, we've got our samples passed, we are submitting the operating permit, and I expect to begin service transfers this week. Uh, we do have one cut and cap on that side, uh, between, um, the railroad and Route 50. We are going to concentrate our efforts between Third and Route 50. Um, I know Iroquois Paving, they began saw cutting today west of the railroad. Um, our crews, we are yielding to Iroquois Paving to not be in their way. Um, you know, that's about all I can say with that. Um, I expect that to be, that we would be complete on the east side, maybe two to three weeks at the most. Uh, we do have Robinson on site inspecting our project, and obviously Robinson is working for you on the IDOT project, so coordination, communication there is pretty open and good. Um, that's, that's about all I've got for the update there. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions I can on that one.
Questions from the board?
What was the water dumping in the street, um, over in the corner over here? There's like copper lines.
So the question is, what is the water that's dumping into the street from, there are like copper lines sticking out of the ground? Are they just flushing the main, or what are they doing there?
I would say that it's flushing. Um, I have not been out there to see it. Um, likely we just will flush when we're pulling samples before, um, I can find out and I can get back to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Just to verify that.
Seven days it seems like.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, those are you referring to?
So, on Corning, right around Third Street, wasn't it?
Yeah.
They were, um, it seemed like there was several days where they, they were just, looked like flushing the lines, maybe. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, so we...
Go ahead, were you gonna say something, Tracy?
No, I was just gonna say that was that Third and Corning, um, and you were just seeing water coming out, that was likely a flushing procedure, um, just to get water moving through there to take more samples.
Any other questions, guys?
Any idea what the railroad was asking?
So the question is, do you know what the railroad, what their comments were?
Uh, I do not know. Um, I think they were just minor edits as far as language goes.
Do you know, Troy?
I can reach out to Robinson.
Not specifically. I can find out.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Tracy, anything else from you?
Uh, no, I don't have any other project update.
Okay.
I, I will, uh, do what I did last week and send Amy another update next Monday.
Perfect. All right, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? I think so, so let's move on to reports of committees, village administrator report.
Um, you had your, you have mine in front of you, um, it's a little lengthy, so I will just touch on a few highlights. Uh, as you all are probably aware, we've had a lot of new business activity, so I just wanted to point out, um, a couple ribbon cuttings that have been intended in the downtown, the yoga studio, and you've, you've been approving these business registrations, so you're, you're familiar with these. Um, there, there are a lot of business activity in the downtown in particular, so I attended the yoga studio ribbon cutting, and these are, uh, the, the chambers, um, been organizing these, the coffee shop ribbon cutting, and then, um, tomorrow at four o'clock, uh, is the Del Carmen ribbon cutting, cor- correct?
Yes.
Julie? Okay. So that's the Mexican restaurant, it's been open for a little while, but we did wanna, they're, they are gonna celebrate with the chamber with the ribbon cutting, so it's pretty exciting. Um, just to point out on my meetings and organizations, the mayor and I did attend a Will, the Will County Mayor's and manager's, a meeting, and we discussed the east-west freight study, um, or the truck, the truck route study that, uh, Will County has taken on based on this group's, um, encouragement over many, many years, so, um, we think that's a really good step in, in trying to control the traffic. Um, it's not, uh, gonna necessarily solve all of our problems, and we still have a lot of work to do, but it's a good first start, so, um, keep that in mind because you're gonna hear more about that, because they're gonna want a lot of public input, so we'll be bringing more information back as we continue to be involved in that.
Can I just comment on that?
Please.
So, we kinda thought they would be concentrating on, you know, Peatone to the road.
Yeah.
But they're not at all. Um, it's all up north, like on Crete Moni Road, um, and they're figuring out a way
Yeah.
to get traffic from Route 1 to I-57, and unfortunately, some of the ways that they, uh, wanna get that traffic to I-57 is to dump it onto Route 50 south of Moni, which, you know, is gonna bring it down through Peatone and Wilmington Road. So I made our stance known that, you know, they can do whatever they want with the road up there, but they need to get the traffic to I-57, uh, the Moni, like, you know, Moni exit, not drag it down here. Um, I think they're kinda banking on the new intersection that was proposed at, I think it's Offner Road there, um, but, you know, that's kinda pie in the sky right now, and what I do, what I don't want them to do, what I told them, I don't want you planning to have that intersection there, and then that intersection doesn't get built, and we get all the truck traffic down here still. And, you know, we said, you know, it's a good start, that we're talking about a truck route out in Eastern Will County, but we really need something further set, we need to consider what's going on in Wilmington Road. So they're gonna have a study, um, they're buying this data, I'm not quite sure how it's generated, but they, they say they will know where every truck is coming from and where every truck is going to that passes through Eastern Will County. It's a study, you know, they could get up, they buy the data from a time period, and so it'll be interesting to see, um, you know, how much of it is coming from the south and east and, you know, going through Peatone, so, anyway, we'll keep our, our eyes on it.
So we're gonna continue to work on, uh, grant funding for, um, a myriad of different activities. Uh, the CARES grant obviously is ongoing, um, we'll, we'll kinda get into that a little bit, um, in the agenda, but, uh, we're, uh, we did get some good news about, um, police payroll being able to, um, capture the majority of the fund, the care funds that are allocated to Will County, so, um, we'll, we have applied for our incurred funds for COVID activities, but we'll also be able to capture, um, police, uh, payroll. Uh, the I-TOP funding, um, that's an agenda item, we can get into that a little bit, but I've, um, spelled it out in my report in a little bit more detail based on our last agenda, our last, um, board meeting, we, um, you gave us some direct, direction to look into it a little further, and the staff did so. Uh, CDVG funding for South Second Street, we applied for that, we did not get that, but we're looking into other funding sources, uh, for that stormwater project. The Rebuild Illinois Public Infrastructure Grant for our I-57 interchange, uh, we should hear about that in December, hopefully, uh, or at least by the end of the year, um, is what we're hoping. It was, there was a lot of applications for that grant. Um, the DCEO sidewalk, um, grant from Lindsay Parker's office, we'll be finishing up with that when we do the Corning project, the Corning Street resurfacing. And the forestry grant, um, we looked into that, and, um, and that would have been a tree inventory and a, a management, uh, study. And we went, we might, um, keep that on our radar to do in the future. Um, with all the business activity, I think that, um, downtown revitalization is a priority for the mayor and the board as a whole, and, uh, the mayor and I have been meeting with some landscape architects to try and look at some kind of basic proposals, so, um, we will keep you posted on the outcome of that, and look for funding sources, uh, developing a plan, um, what the, what the budget for that might be. And I'll let Bob talk about public works activity, even though it's in my report.
Questions for the administrator?
Have you heard any more about the Giro's Place, the restaurant? Are they moving ahead?
Uh, last week I spoke with the Baumgartners, or the landlords there, and they said, they thought he was gonna open this week, so I'm not quite sure, but, they said he had moved all his equipment in there, so.
And he, and he has had, uh, a, a restaurant elsewhere, I think I, I said it the last time, he didn't, but he has. He, um, and he, he got closed down or, or something, and, and so he's...
Well, he had a restaurant in the mall.
In the mall.
In the mall. When they closed that food court down, so.
And so he's moving here, and he has submitted for a signed permit, so.
So he's moving forward.
Yeah.
Good. Any other questions? All right, police chief report?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Uh, engineeric report, Troy?
Uh, just an update on the Corning Avenue project, the IDOT project. Um, they, we're supposed to start the concrete rules today, their subcontractor, J.J. Newell, so they're, they'll be doing concrete work for a few weeks, and then, uh, they'll start the pavement removal and paving, so, um, as long as we have decent weather, there should be no issues with getting the IDOT project done. Um, the only thing that might be temporary is the pavement markings, the striping, but if, if, if so, they'll have to just make sure they fix them or redo them in the spring, but they'll get, they'll get something done for winter.
So is it possible, like, the section that Aqua's doing, that, that, so it was the plan that, like, Iroquois Paving was gonna do the whole road at once, and that just Aqua was gonna pay for that section?
I'm guessing that's the way they were going to do it if it was ready.
Yeah.
Um, that would just be easier for Iroquois and...
Yeah.
Get Aqua a better price for that work, but, um, yeah, it, uh, it sounds like, depending on when you get the permit and they get the work done, you know, the paving still could be a, you know, three weeks off or a month, but, um...
I mean, is it possible that the rest of the road will be done and that road, that section won't be done?
It is possible, yeah, depending on how long the railroad permit takes and how long Aqua's, you know, activities are going and ordering to get it done, it just, yeah, depends when that happens.
And do we have assurances from Aqua that, you know, if they dig up the road to work on their main, there's not time to pave it in that section, that they'll at least put, you know, asphalt down for the winter so they're not plowing gravel?
Um, I don't know if there's assurances, but I, I'm sure we could talk to Aqua, and I think they would do that, at least do some sort of patch, you know, up to the surface level, 'cause we obviously will not want the stone down, you know, during the winter, so.
Okay.
I'm sure that's something that we could work out if that, if that came, if it came to that.
All right. Any questions for Troy? All right, Bob, public works.
Well, Troy shared, uh, part of my report. Um, back to trustee Ham's question, um, when Aqua was on the phone, those things that stick out of the ground are called whips.
Good.
Uh, and those are, those are chlorine injection sites, but they can also flush out of those.
Okay.
So, uh, the other thing I see the biggest problem with the railroad, um, is that portion of Corning, they have to put a casing under there. So if the main's 12-inch, the casing's probably 16-inch, so, there you go. So that's probably a delay there. Troy, maybe, if you can correct me on that, or?
The casing, I mean, that's part of the project, but yeah, the casing pipe is almost double the...
Right, double the size of the main.
Yeah. So I mean, that's what they're ordering, the casing to there.
Yes, so that, usually, they have issues with that when you start putting things under there.
Oh, you're saying why the permit's slow?
I'd say that's something to do with the casing, probably, more than likely.
But, but my understanding was that they were almost there, like, their, the comments were minor, it's just getting them to sign off finally, I just, I don't think they've done it, I don't know why.
Right. Um, a few things here in my report, uh, leaf collection's coming up, uh, I think they have the dates for that program. Uh, it'll be October 19th through December 4th, weather permitting. Uh, any questions on?
And with leaf collection, it's just, you guys just go along continuously through the village, you don't, like, do one side or the other, or do you, or how does that work?
Uh, well, we do, well, yeah, so we run the whole town each week.
Yeah.
And then...
Okay.
Once that's done, then we'll, you know.
Okay. And then branch pickup stops?
Branch pickup will stop the last week of October.
So you actually will overlap a couple weeks then?
We do overlap a couple weeks.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, J.J. Newell is the subcontractor for Iroquois Paving, they have started saw cutting, like you for the mayor. Uh, fence slats of the new shop are almost complete, um, got a little bit more to go. Uh, the plantings are probably three-quarters of the way done, so we're close, should get those done in probably this week or next week.
So, the plan is there, so the trustees are aware.
Okay.
So they're gonna get those, the slats done, uh, on the south fence, they, they're done on the west side, um, they just gotta pick up a few more plants to finish the landscaping that was required, and then we're gonna call, uh, Will County to come out and inspect. Uh, there was, we don't have any slats on the north side, 'cause that's not our fence, and, uh, we talked to Will County about it, and, um, they actually are citing the adjacent property owners for that, 'cause they were supposed to have a privacy fence, and so, um, we're hoping that that gets us off the hook, that then they'll give us the final oxygening permit without having to do anything with that north side, so. Uh, and other good news out there, I don't know if you're gonna include it, Bob, but the, um, Nycor is out there the last week, and they're connecting up our, uh, natural gas line, so that's really good news.
They're, they're real close, coming, coming real close.
That's great.
Um, thank you, Dr. March. Um, it's the last week for apps for the part-time, uh, winter help for public works.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
I saw the article, is that just for snow plowing? Or are you adding a person?
Just, it'd be just for snow plowing.
So there's no snow, there's no person?
Well, that was a discussion I think I had with Dr. March and Amy, was, um, I could use another guy in the shop, especially what we have to get done this winter, um, not even, yeah. With moving things, uh, so, if we can guarantee this person some hours, they'd be each hour.
Is that budgeted for?
I believe it is.
The treasurer's right behind you, I'm looking at her.
Is it budgeted for part-time help?
Yeah. But the job listing says 7:30 to 3:30, Monday through Friday, which sounds a lot like 36 hours, 37 hours a week?
No.
No? That's not what we're talking about?
No.
Okay. I'm just, I got the newspaper thing that I cut out, and I was like, holy cow, it's way more than I thought it was gonna be. So what is it? What, so if I came in and applied for, what do you tell?
I would, I would offer you three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, unless it snows. If it snows, then obviously you'd need more hours.
Yeah, I, I thought it was just if it snows, we need help, so we would hire them on an hourly basis, but that's not what this is.
No. I would like to have at least a person three days a week in the shop, doing, you know, jobs, and then if it snows, also plow.
Is this strictly an hourly position, or is it gonna pay medical benefits?
I can hear you.
Hourly.
Strictly hourly, no benefits?
Yeah, hourly, no benefits.
No benefits.
Anything else, Bob?
Uh, sprinkle will start Friday.
Oh, great, so the installation's going. Any questions for Bob? All right, thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Tell your crew they've been doing a great job getting that stuff ready. Appreciate it. All right, um, treasurer's report?
All right, it's doom and gloom, comes with better news this month.
Go ahead.
So, in the, uh, month of August, which is what the treasurer report you have, I'll give you a little color with some of the revenue that we received. Video gaming tax reappeared this month, although we're likely to take a dip due to the minor Will County shutdown we had, um, next month or the month after, but we did, it did come back. Um, instead of a negative 20-some percent, we're actually a positive 20% this month. Um, but that was in part, uh, because income taxes were delayed this year, so you had, you had a longer period of time to pay your income taxes, so we're seeing more of a streamlined effect with the income tax returns that were, the income tax money we're getting back from the state, so instead of having these hu- huge hits when it was a firm deadline and the deadline was extended, so everything's streaming along a little better, so we did see a huge impact from that this month versus last year at the same time. Um, also, sales tax was, was practically normal, so that was a huge, huge shock and change from what we've seen the past three months, so.
So would that have been for sales in July, then?
It would be sales that were in May.
In May?
May.
Okay.
Yes.
Interesting.
So, um, are we out of the hole? No, we're still in the hole, but it was a much better month in, as far as revenues coming in the door, so, um, hopefully things will continue to trend and we'll be fine, but I, you know, the, the $70,000, $75,000 that were in the hole that we didn't receive, you know, those other months, we won't get back, but it is trending better than what I've been reporting for, presenting the past three months, which has been an ugly, ugly thing, so.
So, any question about our investments, uh, the, uh, the general fund, First Community Bank, uh, that 2.8 million that's in there, uh, I mean, I know we were getting like over 2%, but I know that was gonna go down, but it's .05% now?
Mm-hmm.
It seems...
And actually, yeah, I mean, that's, yeah. Um, I've talked to them back and forth, we can transition into another one at one point, which was .1%.
Really?
Um, and then, uh...
I mean, how's First Midwest able to give us .5?
I was just gonna say, I don't think that's, I think that's a typo, I think it's .05.
You think both of them are .05?
I think that's .05 also, I think that's a typo.
Oh.
I'll double check it.
Okay.
So, uh, First Midwest approached us, and, uh, we'll have to discuss it in AOC committee about, um, redoing some stuff and getting some better returns, 'cause right now, we're getting positive returns, but, um, our monthly expense is eating it up, so, um, as soon as we get an AOC committee meeting, I need to get approval, and, 'cause they keep asking when we can transition into a better scenario.
Okay. Any other questions for Marcy?
And then the big, and you'll notice also if you're looking at the investment, that, um, the Illinois Trust CD program, we had a couple of CDs mature, so that's why you see that big, big bump, so, we collected on our maturity there and our dividend and interest, and, um, we invested into additional CDs further on.
Perfect. And then, um, I had asked Marcy to give us kind of an update as far as our yearly budget, since we're kinda halfway through, and she wants to close out September, which obviously is coming up in a couple days, and, uh, she'll give us a report at our next meeting, correct?
Mm-hmm, six-month report.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, thank you. Okay, so, we have no old business, uh, add a new business, uh, since, uh, seems like Chief Schreiber has a fan club here, I'd like to move up the proclamation to, uh, the first I'm on new business, so Chief, if you'd like to come on up here. And we've got a little proclamation to read for you. So whereas William Schreiber began his career in 1980 as a cadet, he became a full-time firefighter, serving the residents of Peatone in 1989, moving up through the ranks. He became a lieutenant in 1985, promoted to captain in 1987, promoted to assistant chief in 1993, and promoted to deputy chief in 1995. Whereas Assistant Chief Schreiber was promoted to the rank of fire chief for the Peatone Fire District Inn and has served the fire chief, uh, since 2008, and whereas Fire Chief Schreiber is retiring at the beginning of October 2020, and whereas, under his effective leadership, the Peatone Fire Department has grown to meet the emergency needs of the community it serves, whereas Chief Schreiber has been an integral member of the broader county fire and EMS community by contributing his time and expertise to many projects, committees, and official boards to promote the most efficient and effective methods of utilizing the resources available to the emergency response profession. And whereas Chief Schreiber has served as the vice president of the Will County Fire Chiefs Association, state of Illinois has an steering committee... Chiefs Association, State of Illinois has an steering committee and regional hazardous response team. And whereas Chief Schreiber has spent countless hours volunteering hands-on at community events and events held within the fire department, always serving and working next to his staff members. And whereas, over his 40-year career, Chief Schreiber has displayed the highest example of character, ethics, morals, and unselfish service. And whereas, on behalf of the entire village board, we wish to express our sincere appreciation to Chief Schreiber for his loyalty to the Peatone Fire District and the citizens of Peatone, and wish him much happiness as he begins his new chapter in life. Now therefore, I, Peter March, village president, Village of Peatone, hereby proclaim this day, Monday, September 28th, 2020, as Fire Chief William Schreiber Day in the Village of Peatone, and urge all citizens and employees to join me and the board of trustees in appreciating his work and congratulating Chief Schreiber on an outstanding career and wishing him many continued years of happiness and good health. Thank you, Chief. Got a picture there, Amy?
Okay, hold up. Hold that pose. Smile.
All right.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so with that proclamation, I would like to entertain a motion to approve that proclamation.
I'll approve.
Second.
It'll move by trustee Maravka, second by trustee Sluse.
Maravka?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Okay, we're going back to item A, Jackie Mills with S-K-E-O, our annual audit presentation.
Good evening. I'm Jackie Miles from S-K-E-O. I'm our audit and insurance manager. I worked on the Village of Peatone audit probably since I started on the S-K-E-O about nine years ago. Um, so looking at your reports this year, you should have, um, bound report. Looks like you guys have it with you. Um, so I'm just gonna jump right in. I don't want to pick up too much of your time. Um, we go to our auditor's report. Uh, page one is actually the third piece of paper in the vague report there. Um, that is our auditor's report. Um, that just explains what management's responsibility is, what the financial statements, what our responsibilities are, um, a little bit about what goes into an audit. Um, and at the top of that second page there, it talks about what our opinion is. Um, so we have a qualified opinion on the governmental activities and then an unclassified opinion on everything else. An unclassified opinion is what most people would refer to as a clean opinion. That means we didn't have any issues or anything. Um, the qualified opinion on governmental activities, um, there's a paragraph right below that that explains it. Um, that was new in your report last year. Um, so that qualification is just that, um, management has not adopted DAFU-75. So that new standard that came out, um, that would've been effective last year, um, basically would require you to, um, report additional information related to some IMRF/OPAD, um, information. Um, and so the cost benefit of that, you guys determined that that wasn't necessarily, that that wasn't necessary. Um, in order to report that information, you would've had to hire an actuary, go through an actuarial study on some of that IMRF/OPAD, which is pretty expensive. Um, so you've chosen not to adopt that. So other than that, that is the only qualification on that section. So other than that, everything else looks right.
Okay.
Um, down at the bottom there, under other matters, um, that just explains that there is some other information that requires supplementary information that's required to be reported with your financial statements. Um, but we do not provide an opinion on that, but it is included here for you. On the next page, it talks about, um, management's discuss, discussion and analysis. Um, the village has also opted to omit that. Um, again, kind of a cost versus benefit. There is a lot of time that would go into that. Um, and that is just providing some additional, uh, financial analysis, basically from the village's perspective is what that would be included. Um, and then just some other information, other supplementary information that's not required to be included, um, but it is for your, uh, for your benefit. Um, so that is in there and then our opinion on that, um, is also that that is fairly stated, um, in relation to your financial statements. Um, the last piece of that talks about, uh, the fact that we have another report on government auditing standards, which is the next page, um, so page four. Um, so that report talks about, uh, internal control over financial reporting. So internal control, that is just your internal system of checks and balances, um, which is what you guys are doing here by approving things. Um, so we gain an understanding of your system of internal control, but we do not express an opinion on that. However, if we did have any issues or anything that we found, um, we would make you aware of it. Um, so we actually do have a finding reported for internal control. So it's all the way, it's the very, very last page of that, of your bound report, um, so page 56. So that finding is what we call a lack of segregation of duties. Um, so if you read the context section, the third section there, um, that says the treasurer has the ability to prepare deposits, prepare checks for signature, record transactions, prepare monthly bank reconciliations and financial reports, and also has check signature authority. So when one person has that many, um, powers, if you will, um, without some additional, uh, checks and balances in there to kind of mitigate that, um, there is a little bit of a risk there. So we do just provide a recommendation that you just have someone else, you know, review bank reconciliations and other financial reports on a regular basis, just to mitigate that. Um, and if you did that this year, then that finding would go away for next year. So this finding is very common for, uh, governments and entities of your size. When you only have a few people in the office, it's kinda hard to separate that out amongst different people. Um, and then I also just wanted to point out, this finding is here just because the potential risk exists that an error or something like that could go unnoticed, um, and that something would be materially misstated. But that does not mean that we found any issues related to that, um, and that we didn't have any. Okay? Any questions about that? Kinda new this year. Um, so going all the way back, oh, and then we also had no findings, no incidents of non-compliance, not anything. Uh, so going all the way back up to page six, that's where it actually starts to our financial statements. Um, obviously, this is all going back to March 31st, so, um, not super relevant anymore. Um, but that page talk goes through your governmental activities, business side activities, that's your, uh, balance sheet there. Um, the business side activities, that is your water sewer stuff. So you can see there's not much left there. The next page, page seven, that's essentially the income statement, but same thing. Page eight, um, that is about cheat that would be more similar to the type of numbers that you guys are, um, normally seeing. Uh, we do make some year-end adjustments on that for some payables, receivables, things like that that can be recorded. Um, otherwise, a lot of that should be similar to what you see during the year. We did add something new there. The second column from the right, the non-major funds, that is the combined total of TIF, two TIF districts and the business development district. So that's the combined totals on that. Um, exhibit D on page nine, that just compares the two different, um, types of financial statements. You can compare what the differences are, um, between those. Exhibit E, um, that is basically your income statement at the fund level. Again, that non-major funds has your TIF, um, and BDD. You can see there was just a little bit of income on there, but no expenses, um, through March 31st. Um, exhibit F just compares the funds to the entity wide segments. Um, exhibit G, that is your proprietary funds. This is the water sewer stuff. So this is what's left, all that's left in there as of March 31st, uh, was just a few remaining utility deposits, um, that Marcy was still working on cleaning up, which he might've even already dealt with all of those. Um, and if not, whatever is still left there at the end of this year, um, you could just transfer those into the general fund this year, uh, if there's anything left. So, just a little bit left there. Everything else got transferred out. Um, so you can see on the next page, page 13, um, so the only expenses that we had, um, in the water and sewer stuff for this year was a little bit of bad debt expense. There were some old receivables that were sitting out there that we just cleaned up, a little bit of interest income, and then that loss on disposal of assets, that is just some remaining assets that were still on the list, um, that probably went to Aqua with the sale that just got missed. Um, so we went through and that goes cleaned up as well. And then the transfers out, um, a lot of that is cash, I think 500, 530,000, something like that, um, was cash that got transferred to the general fund. Um, and then also some capital assets that got transferred to Public Works, some remaining vehicles, things like that that Public Works took over. All right, um, next page is just saving cash for those on that. There's a lot of that same information. Uh, page 15 and 16, that is your fiduciary fund statement. Um, that talks about your lease pension, um, and kind of the ins and outs on that. Um, starting with page 17, that is the footnotes to your financial statements. This just gives you more in-depth information about a lot of things that are presented there, um, your capital assets, your long-term debt, your receivables, all of that, uh, just in more detail for you. Um, I did just wanna point out one thing. If you go to page 39, the very last footnote, um, note 15. Uh, this note is about contingencies. So the first paragraph of that just talks about the pandemic, um, the fact that that happened, it started in January, things got shut down in March just before your fiscal year end. Um, and then goes on to talk about, um, because you are so heavily funded by taxes and all of that, um, that you are likely to see some, um, negative impacts to your financial, uh, status from that, um, as Miss Doom and Gloo has already been presenting to you. So, uh, so you've already seen that. Um, but we can't just measure, you know, what the total impact of that is gonna be, but just pointing out that there could be one. All right, um, everything in the rest of the report, that is just some of that additional information that I mentioned before. Um, there's some budget for actual comparisons in there, um, some additional pension information as well, um, and a few more detailed, um, schedules in the back for you. In addition to that, you should also have another packet, uh, that has the TIF report in it. Um, we gave that off to the TIF consultants, Mr. Fowler for some compliance. Um, and then you should also have another letter from us, um, that just explains if you have any findings, any issues, any concerns, um, so other than the findings that were listed, and maybe we didn't have any other issues, um, to report to you. So that is all I have, unless anyone has any questions for me.
As far as GABBY, GABBY 75, you said that it's not cost-effective for us to implement that. We're not the only town this size.
No.
Is that pretty common for towns this size?
Yep, yep. It's IMRF, um, other post-employment benefit information, um, having to deal with some health insurance stuff. Um, yeah, because you have to hire an actuary for that, it's really just not cost-effective for the additional information that it's gonna give you. Um, and you, we do a couple other village audits and they both have the same, um, the same thing that they're not doing that, that way as well.
Okay. So we're not an outlier on that?
Nope, not at all.
Other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you guys so much for your time. I appreciate it. Good night.
If there's no other questions, entertain a motion to accept the audit as presented. So moved. Moved by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Jones. Bowden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yeah.
Sluse?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, next on the agenda is the Chicago Metropolitan Planning Council, uh, priori plan update. So do you wanna introduce the?
Hi Enrique, are you there?
Enrique?
I heard him breathe.
Hi, everyone. Uh, thank you, Amy. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
We can. Thanks for joining us. Oops, a train.
Thank you for having me. I, I wanted to give a brief update today on how we're doing with the plan priority report, but I'm with Amy and I wanted to, uh, introduce myself to, um, your group there. Um, it was, uh, we've been working with Peatone now for a few months and by this time, I would have, I'd like to have been in present, um, to introduce myself and talk with them about what's going on. Um, you know, we've been working with Amy and the mayor, um, and the steering committee now for about four months since we initiated the, uh, IGA. And so I wanted to give everyone a quick update as to where we are at right now. Um, we have touched about, there's been, uh, six phases to this work, uh, and we have completed the first, um, three and in the middle the number four. The first phase was the, the pre-pickup, which we had done a, uh, steering committee kickoff, um, and then the project kickoff, um, which was with, with the interim committee. Um, their first assignment was to identify stakeholders within the community and residents to be, uh, to be interviewed, uh, stakeholder interviews and identifying some of the opportunities, issues and opportunities, um, within Peatone. So during phase three and now currently in four, um, we are wrapping up all the outreach. Um, one of the things that we heard from the, the interviews that we were conducting, which were about a little over 25 interviews, and this is, this was the staff, residents, business owners, um, we kept hearing that there was a need for more, uh, interactions within the community, um, people really wanted to get involved. Um, so I actually put together a community survey and with the help of the mayor, we promoted it through the Facebook, through his Facebook, and we generated about 107 responses within a, uh, 10-day period, which was, which is really amazing. Um, and if the mayor heard, definitely helping us with that, uh, 'cause that was a, a really big win for the community, was to get that community responses in such little time. Um, and so we're currently now, like I said in the Facebook, where we are, um, summarizing everything that came from all those interviews and, uh, survey, um, which will be our first level of two, uh, to the steering committee is the outreach company. And we're also in the middle of doing our existing commission report, where we are looking at the data, pieces of data, um, about the community. We have also, um, been working with Amy to, um, generate, um, we're not generating, but she's been sending us some of the reports or planning that has happened in the past within Peatone so that we can also include that, take a look at that and inject whatever we need from those into the current priorities that we are looking to develop out the, the recommendation. So I'm gonna stop there to see if there's any questions, 'cause I kinda threw quite a bit at everybody.
So I guess, what is, uh, what do you think it's all gonna wrap up? What's the update?
So I, I believe we had an end date of, uh, I believe March of next year, but I, that was with the additional three months that we kind of lost at the beginning of the year because of COVID. Um, so we are, I'm actually projecting to have a, at least a draft of the final report by December, um, which was the initial date that we were supposed to have done by. So I'm still trying to, uh, make that, that original deadline.
Perfect. Other questions from the board?
Yeah, we're trying to make up time here. I added a few, I added, we added a few different people to, during the team. Um, we have, uh, Beatrice, which is a few who have already met, her helping with the, the interviews, um, with some of the admin works, and then also Patty, uh, who is going to be helping us with, uh, transportation topics when it comes to, uh, um, the Village of Peatone. So, again, we're trying to make up some time that we had lost there, a few years, so that we can still deliver, and know that this has been in the works for a while, and this is something that you all need sooner than later, and we are looking really hard to deliver that.
Okay, uh, I don't think we have any other questions, so I appreciate your time today and, uh, look forward to hearing from you real soon, okay?
Don't worry, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks Enrique. We'll talk to you soon.
Okay.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Going down our agenda, uh, item D, the CARES grant, uh, Amy included in your packet. I'm sorry it was a little, uh, unreadable, uh, 'cause it was so small, but, uh, so that was a list of items that she has submitted for reimbursement. Uh, we were trying to get creative on what we could get reimbursed. So to kind of back up, uh, the CARES grant was something that was passed by Congress, uh, that made this money available to, uh, government. And in our area, it was funneled through Will County. Will County decided that we could get an allocation of 173,000 approximately, but to do that, we had to actually spend money on virus-related expenditure. So, you know, everybody was having a hard time coming up with, um, things that would allow them to capture that whole, um, amount of money that was allocated. them to capture that whole amount of money that was allocated. So, we got good news last week, they actually kind of changed the rules, they're allowing us to submit public health and safety personnel salary as a covered expense, which in our case would include police salaries. So we can submit police salaries from, is it March 1st, to the end of the year, so that'll more than cover this 170,000. So, we should be able to recover that whole amount. These issues, the ones that we had submitted already, Amy's going to check, FEMA is also has a program that they, they would reimburse, their rules are much stricter as far as, you know, it has to do directly with, you know, virus mitigation. So, some of the things that we've spent money on are less May qualify, like, you know, putting up the Plexiglas screen or stuff like that, but a lot of the other things that we had, you know, tried to get creative with, I don't think would be reimbursed, so.
We're going to continue to, you know, work through FEMA, work through Will County CARES, and just try to maximize as much as we can recover, I guess is the bottom line, for sure. But the good news was that we, that they do consider the public safety completely related to COVID work, that we don't have to justify that they were only working on COVID-related activities, it's just they changed the rule to say, they just, they, they just believed that they were, they don't, we don't have to prove it. That doesn't apply to Public Works, but we would have to prove that they were only working on public COVID-related activities. With, with police and fire, you know, they changed the rules to say that they believe that they, their, their work is completely related to that, so, that's, that is good news. So, the, the other issue was that we tried to submit one application for incurred and estimated expenses, and it has to be all for incurred expenses, so, some of these on here were estimates of things that we thought we might incur at some point, and that has not got fly. So, we'll work through kind of the logistics of these applications, and we'll be, we'll recover as much funds as we possibly can.
So I don't think there's really any action that needs to be taken. Amy's just going to continue to, you know, work on these applications, make sure that we get paid reimbursed with the full amount, and that should, you know, make a nice little dent in our budget deficit.
Yeah, we, Chief, you know, did some research on keyless entry, and we were hoping we'd be able to, you know, get some reimbursement for that, but we'd have to incur that expense, and then, I don't know, I'd have to talk to Chief whether he'd rather cover his payroll or keyless entry.
Perfect, Jason, they're going to go from what time period to March?
March 1st to the end of the year.
Yeah.
And, and we're maxed out at 170.
Correct.
Okay, so if we incur 225, it's not going to do us any good.
Right.
Correct. Got it.
It's our monthly payroll.
I'll have to check on that, I mean.
Is that like three months, five months?
What do you think, Chief?
Well.
And we can apply for benefits with that, too.
March 1st is actually, the end of our budget year, and April 1st began the budget We're probably, I'm guessing about 10,000 a month salary, at least that. I don't have a.
I know, if we had a budget book in front of us. And we can do.
If you're talking, I can look it up.
We can go sal, we can do salaries, and we can do benefits, the only thing we can't do is, is pension. Julie's got one. We got, we cannot get the payroll part of the benefit back, but we can get everything else.
For what part?
Oh, pension.
The pension.
We can't get the pension.
We get the payroll.
We get payroll and all the other benefits.
Yeah. So anyway, we'll work on, make sure that we can maximize that amount.
So we can get a big chunk.
I don't think we're going to have a problem, I think our.
I would like to get some of these other expenses that we already incurred back as well, which really are not that, it's not that much, it's maybe $15,000 or so, plus whatever amount of salary we can get. So I will look into the FEMA portion, but a lot of it is like some of the technology, it's IT, it's, it's, you know, some of the wiring we did for the phones, it's the, you know, wireless, it's a lot of the things that we needed for the remote meetings, so some of those things I would like to get reimbursed, if we, if we can, if, if that's okay, you know, that's, that's part of the application we've already submitted, and expenses we've already incurred. I was trying to, you know, get some, estimate what we could spend, you know, like with a server, with the HVAC, to make this room quiet for meetings for people who can't come and want to watch it. They said that's pushing it a little bit, and they're like, probably you're not going to get reimbursed for that. So, you know, that's just some of those little things I got to work through with the, the people who are administering these grants, so. Again, because we'd have to spend that money on the HVAC, and I don't want them to tell me they're not going to reimburse it, so.
Yeah, I, I really don't think we're going to have trouble getting reimbursed, you know, for that, I mean, you know, that's three quarters of the year, and it's even more than that, and, you know, just doing rough math, what a police officer makes in, you know, per year, we're not going to have a problem with that.
No, you're looking at 900,000.
Right.
Police salaries.
Yeah, so we're not going to have a problem with that.
For the year.
So we'll be able to max out on that.
Yeah.
Okay. There's no other questions, we'll move on. We need a resolution supporting submission of application to the Illinois Department of Transportation for funding of the 2020-2021 Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program. This is the ITUP grant that Amy was talking about, we've applied for this grant many times in the past for the walkway on Wilmington Road. We are going to try again this year, there's more money available, so cross your fingers, hopefully we'll get it. So this is the path that we've been discussing for years, that would be on the south side of the street. I know the last time we talked about this was some question about whether we wanted to go to the north side of the street, but we decided to keep it on the south side, and that's what Amy will be submitting, so. Questions? If not, I'll need a motion to approve that resolution.
Motion, second.
Moved by Trustee Jones, second by Trustee Hamm.
Jones?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Item G, Christmas in the Village, so, the recommendation of the commission, because of the virus and issues with a number of people in the gathering, the recommendation was to cancel the activities during the day for this year. Excuse me. We are waiting until November to decide about the parade, so.